I'd like to call a meeting to order. We stand as up, flag back to the right. I place a delinquency to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Jeff, two things. Jordan King is sick where he really can't come in and his baby is about to deliver. So because that, Rick has said, I didn't know Omar was going to be late tonight and he too selected to have me up. So I called him on the call to just, "Rick, Shannon, thank you for coming." So we could fulfill the requirements to a public meeting. All of the administered paperwork is all signed off on. So we want to really get into focusing on the budget. Jeff Ames had a fire this weekend and he's heard his back. And what I'd like to do is have Jeff's fire report first and then we'll go right into Jeff's budgetary hearing.
Well, I would like to just go over the budget first before we start anything, just to show you how to read it and then you can go over the actual budget. Do you know what I mean? Because some people might not understand where some of the numbers came from.
Okay, fine. What's your thing? Can you come on the camera? Are you here wanting to take my seat? Go ahead.
No, no, no.
No.
He was going to do his report first, correct?
I have you all in the picture or whatever, just as long as everybody speaks up. That's all.
Point of information, are we even hearing yet?
Yeah, we need to start.
I haven't heard a vote on the hearing.
All set.
I haven't heard a vote before we were hearing.
I just have brought the meeting board, that's all it did.
I asked, are we having a hearing yet? Okay. Does that mean something?
Go ahead, Jeff. Okay. So I'll try to make this even briefer than what I have written down here. Activity wise, we've been very busy. The fire department's been going pretty steady. One of the first ones that we've had since the last meeting, we had a chimney fire, we blocked chimney, smoke in the building. They evacuated, that was on East Side Road. We cleared the chimney and took care of the creature stuff that was burning inside, lathered the building, etc. for that. The next call came in on Thayer Mountain Road. There's a building fire, there was stove explosion. What had happened, it blew the front glass out of the stove. What we found on scene was, you know, some wood, ember's debris and fire on the floor. The police chief was also there and aided in thus getting that taken care of. So it really wasn't a building fire, but it could have been. If somebody was dead, sure, so it would have been. The reason that that happened, and this is just an educated guess like I have said to others in the past, is what the fire department will find called smoke explosion or secondary combustion. Basically choked off the chimney while the stove went up, building those heat and gases. Secondary combustion is an explosion, expansion of the smoke. So that's what happened. The next we had was a lot of activation here at the school. That is due to some burnt wood. And then the next thing is we get called Sunday morning to a chimney fire. It led into a building fire. So the first firefighter on scene was able to live up five minutes and gave us a report on the radio as to what we saw when we called in. We had a full working instructor fire at that point. So that brought in 13 other pieces from our new plate when we go to the first line, plus including what we had in our scene. We had 13 firefighters from our department there. So those guys have worked hard. Our new people have done very good job. And then on trainings, we were all hyped and ready to go for training on Saturday, the Saturday 8:00 AM with Doc. They have since called us and have called off through all the restrictions we've... And that's pretty much it, I guess. That's too bad. Are we going to try and reschedule? I am going to, we'll see what happens. Maybe more towards summer. Okay. Because I think that's always good. And we may be able to tie that with Blackout Call. Yeah. Because right now they're under COVID restrictions. Entire military reserve is... Okay. Let's move into the budgetary hearing. Make the motion, we move into the hearing? Any seconds? Select or not. Okay, I vote yes.
I vote yes.
Okay, so now Jeff, do you discuss your budget, please? This year we went up the money.
About time, I wanted to just tell you.
Sorry, I thought Jeff...
Just so that everybody knows how to read it, well, you're all used to it, but some people don't. The first part is the budget itself with everybody's departments. Then it's kind of self-explanatory. And at the end, at the end you'll see on page six, go there, you see that our total proposed budget for 2021 is $1,397.04. And then go a little farther down and we're going to be using money from capital reserves, $399,000, capital reserve, $128,000, and fund balance of $1,000,000. So net dollars from tax stations, $1,220,000, just so you know that. Then attach to it are the warrant articles. And all the warrant articles that are highlighted are ones that I don't have final figures for, but the figures are very close. You know, we just have to get like the dollars and cents on a couple of things. And the last page on the warrant articles just adds up all the different warrant articles and they come to $1,397.04, which is the total budget. So I just wanted to kind of show you that the warrant articles do equal everything on the budget. And then the very last page, that's all by itself, is just our very estimated income. So you can see how it all ties together. We plan on bringing in approximately $2.7 million in taxes. We have to pay $1.6 million in school budget, $186,000 in the graffiti tax. Very, very preliminary. Then all of our other income, and it's all broken down, comes to about $606,000. So that keeps our total income, the $909 on top and the $606, comes to a total income of $1.5 million. Then our proposed budget on that page six again and all the warrant articles is $1.391,000. So what we have left over to be added to the fund balance eventually is $124,000. Just to kind of show you how it all ties in together. Does that make sense or does anybody have questions?
So $124 goes to the capital reserve?
No, it goes to the fund balance.
So all these figures over the last week, when there are like $1,000, $14,000?
Yes, yeah. So that's basically what happened earlier before and now everybody can go over their own individual budgets.
Thank you, Linda. Chief. On the budget, we're going to see, or hopefully have funding available for an increase of about $3,000. And it's mostly due to new people coming on board. So we've increased the training budget area a little bit. We're also looking at increasing the incentive pay. You know, give these guys a little more money, especially when we've got about four new people this summer in itself. So those are the increased areas. Incentive pay, training, and a little bit on the communications end. And other than that, it pretty much stays the same. The other thing that we do, like we do every year, is whatever monies that we have left over that would be going back into the unexpended fund balance and cash for that amount, come back out. So if you look at my out of blood, it's out of the pen. I'll have it in front of you. It shows that, those numbers. Okay, any questions?
Or anything?
I fired it up. Everybody's clear? Good. Okay, thank you, Jeff. Yeah, thank you. I'm headed. Okay, take care. I hope you feel better. Yes, chief, thank you. I will, thank you for going through all of them. Chief Trot, you want to discuss the police budget?
Sure. So, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm just going to do just a brief synopsis of my budget so it's a little easier understood. And I do this almost every year anyways. In reviewing the police department budget for 2020, the bottom line shows that I had a working budget in 2020 of $90,609.06. The actual budget expenses for January through December 2020 shows that I expended $100,369.64. This indicates that I'm over by $9,463,000 or 10.41% of my budget. In order to show a true reflection of the budget, we need to take into consideration two items. And Linda, God bless her, next year has made a change in a line item in my budget where we'll be able to follow this more closely and it will be simpler to understand. The line item in the budget, which is 421048, it's under special details and track. In 2020, the one where police department generated $12,550 in revenue.
What's that number, excuse me?
$12,550.
I mean, the number that, the line item?
Oh, I'm sorry. 421048?
Okay, thank you.
Okay. That is revenue that's generated by the police department, not just through the racetrack, but through the racetrack, through an OHV grant or any other details that department would work, like the property or whatever the case may be. The other thing I want to bring up is the fact that the town of Wentworth was also reimbursed last year through the CARES Act regarding hours that I worked through COVID-19, specifically related to COVID-19 work. They reimbursed the town of Wentworth $5,570. So what this means is that there's an additional $18,120 that needs to be added to the budget, which gives us a total of $109,026. So if we take that new number and then subtract the actual expenditures from 2020, we then show a balance of $8,656.36. That balance is in the black, not the red, so it is a positive, not a negative. And obviously, next year, as I said, we'll be able to show this a little more clearer in the budget. But just for the purpose of clarification, the police department is not over budget. So we are under budget when you take into consideration the revenues that we generated for 2020. Thank you. Any questions? Questions?
This is not a complaint, right? He's just imagination because I think what he's doing is right. They have that money in a separate account that doesn't show up on any county report, not even in the revenue section, right? It's dead wrong because you have the authorization to spend and if you don't have the authorization to spend, can't spend it. Both do not understand that anything. And you have no authorization to spend that money coming from the racetrack other than the fact that there was some form of account setup out of which it was painted out of. My question then, are you still going to have that account? All money coming at him should come directly to the balance.
It's my understanding that those monies are actually accounted for in an account. It's just that it is not so specific that, not so specific in mind that it shows that that money was generated through the police department. But it does show all revenues in one other part of the budget and it accounts for those monies.
Because there is another factor to this whole budget that people seem to totally avoid and that is the revenue side.
It's the very last page.
I know, I know. But people don't, not necessarily look at that. It's always on the county report, but it's so abbreviated, it's not easy to understand.
And that's correct and that's why I always give this explanation because of that reason. Excuse me?
Could you put that analysis that you got there in a minute? Or not put it in a minute?
All right, it's going to go in the minutes? It's going to go in the minutes? Everything here goes in the minutes?
May I just say something?
You gotta listen.
There is a revenue account that has this year, you know, $14,000 or no, $10,000 was the money that came in, the chief Trot, from the racetrack and from various fees and things. It does show up in a revenue account. The money just gets deposited into a police revolving account, but that account is owned by the town. It's just kept separately.
I don't think you can keep it separately.
But I mean, but yeah, I don't know why it is kept separately. You don't use the money, it's not going to be the month. It just sits there.
Why do you tell you why you want it separately? Is because by putting it in with budget, it makes your budget look higher than it really is as far as expenses on that account.
Francis, it's not in the budget.
And they put it up to a separate account.
And that's exactly why the 2021 budget looks as if it's $10,000, $11,000, $12,000 higher, when in reality it's not.
No, I understand what you're saying and I think in answer to Francis's question, you're solving this in 2021.
Well, we're hoping to, yes.
Yes.
I guess what I'm saying also, those two accounts that you have, one is a full control, one is for retail, they all go into this town account.
Well, it is. Yeah, it is. Or we wouldn't be able to spend it anyways.
Any more questions for Chief Trot?
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you, chief.
Next person up will be Paul Manson.
So my 2021 budget for the highway department, it is, by looking at the budget numbers created from last year and this year, it appears that it's much higher this year. But last year, the $316,300, there was also $40,000 added on to that number for the third person at the highway department. So that total number should be $356,300 from last year. Linda, I'm not going by that, I've got my own notes. There was a warrant article last year for $40,000 for a third person at the highway department. Does that make sense? So my budget for this year is $359,900. That is the highway department budget. I'm going to explain. So on the budget that Linda has for me, I just want to explain this in detail, you guys. Linda has in my highway budget this year, the warrant article. As you can see, it's a line item 43120204, backhoe loader. It's in there for $133,942. I believe I put $5,000 in there for repair of the backhoe and then there's another $128,942 in there that will be going to a warrant article. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yes.
Francis, you're looking at me like you don't know.
Look, you know what? Once you finish your presentation.
Okay. So what I'm saying is my budget basically went up $3,000 from last year because these warrant articles haven't passed. They're in my budget now. Does anybody have any questions about the budget?
Where is the new truck figure lying here?
The what?
The new truck.
That's on a warrant article.
That would be.
The new truck is down the bottom on the long term bond interest. You have a freight line to stay.
I assume that's the $26,500.
Yes, it is. That is a comparable.
It, the number is not exact. I just got an email when I was sitting there with the exact number and the exact number is going to be $28,140.32. I just got the email five minutes ago while I was sitting there.
Now, I've got a question on that. Have you been able to trade in on the truck? They paid you $9,000 trade-in on the truck, it's minus 10, yes?
That's what they are offering us as long as the truck is still running and there's no lights on in the dash, there's no oil leaks or anything. That is the number right now.
And by taking the $9,000 trade-in, it takes it off the top of the cost of the vehicle. For lack of a great number, that might mean $180,000 being the total of the truck and everything with it. And $9,000 off of that would bring it down to $171,000. That means that the town is not getting the $9,000 in 2021. It's going to have to wait seven years to get the benefit of the $9,000 trade-in. It would be better off to keep the truck, sell it outright, give the $9,000 or more and put it in the general fund, thereby increasing the possibility of a better cash flow. $9,000 isn't much, but it will improve the cash flow by having it there as opposed to having it entered non-star, whatever it's called, hand. It doesn't make sense to trade something you own, which we do own it, for something you're going to be renting for a period of seven years. You're only getting $1,300 approximately. That's $9,000 divided by seven. You're only giving $1,300 this year, 2021, for your $9,000 that you handed to them. That is not the right way to do monetary business.
Francis, the select board voted two meetings ago to, we're going to do this freight miner deal to just do it as a trade-in. It was voted on by the entire board.
And we didn't finalize?
It was voted on in the minutes.
But that doesn't mean you finalize, but that has to be done in a separate meeting.
I'm going to speak up. Jeff Ames spoke on this subject in the last meeting and we also had Kevin Matt speak on this subject. And the best, I don't live in town, but my opinion is in the best interest of the town, I believe that the town should take the $9,000 in trade-in and get out from under this truck.
At a public, at one of our select board meetings, we had extensive discussion on just this issue. It was mechanic's analysis, it was Jeff Ames' analysis, that this machine was not worth keeping and undergoing the risk of not having it able to sell on the open market. The best deal we were getting was from freight line. Is that my understanding?
Western Star.
Western Star, yeah.
You already were given $9,000 and somebody said, "No, I won't sell it to you."
That's not what happened. Jared King was down at the highway department and he said, "I'd give you $9,000 for it." And the mechanic that was at the shop that does the work for the town and does Jared's work looked at him and said, "I will not let you buy it for $9,000."
Francis, Francis, we voted on, this has already been voted on by after... Francis, could you stay quiet for one minute, please? Could you stay quiet for one minute? Let me explain. We had an extensive discussion on this at a select board meeting. The select board meeting was open to YouTube, was open to Zoom, for everybody in town to participate. The people that participated listened to the discussion. We then had a motion to go into the arrangement with Western Star the way we did and the board voted positive for.
You see my point, trade it out over seven years?
I can see your point, but it's a theoretical point and the town has moved on from your point.
It doesn't have to, it's not too late, yes.
Does anybody have any other questions about my budget?
I have one question. I don't have you with me because I didn't realize you were here.
Okay. Sonya, you're here, you want to talk for the planning board budget?
Sure, I can find it.
So she gets ready. Linda, can you talk on the transfer station?
Okay, transfer station. You can see the budget's gone up quite a bit over last year. Last year, I think it was an adjustment year. We had a lot more expenses from the rubbish pickup and disposal and also the collection expenses from the way up. I think the reason, you can see that it's over budget, by $1,000 in 2020. I think the reason is we just have a lot more trash coming in. We have a larger population. It wasn't estimated properly in 2019 to project for 2020 just because it's up all over and they were in line up until like this year. And also it made some adjustments, like you have to kind of look at the total over just the $7,000 because some of the accounting was being done incorrectly and was just being put into the wrong category. So we weren't getting a good picture. And now everything is all straightened out. So when we go into 2021, it's nice and clean. It should reflect what's going to happen in 2021. It should reflect what's gonna happen in 2021. The only real difference is we did increase the wages a little bit because the transfer station employees hadn't received increases in many, many years. And we wanted to bring them up at least to what the federal government is thinking of as a minimum. So that moved it, you know, approximately $4,500 is an increase. But everything else should just bring us more in line where it's really happening there. And I also wanted to tell you that I wrote another warrant article for them. It is... Are these number 15, I think? No, it's 14. We have a capital reserve account for the transfer station. And right now, it has in it $29,000. And the name of the account is Transfer Station Recycling Expense. Because at one point, we were going to recycle a lot of our things. Well, Randy has informed me that we may need a new electric compactor. You can either... Richard was gonna come over and take a look at it and see if it's gonna belong with it or if it just needs service. But in case we do need a new one, they say it's very old, I wrote this warrant article number 14 to redefine the purpose of that capital reserve fund. Right now, I said, you know, the purpose it was created was for recycling. And now, I think we should change... It's an expendable trust, so the select board can expend it. But I think we need to just change it for the new purpose to be for purchasing items and equipment for the transfer station and get rid of that where recycling. So we'd have to do that and change the name of the fund. And that's a warrant article that doesn't cost any money or anything. But if down the line within the summer, if this compactor breaks down, the select board would be able to authorize the trustees to release money from the trust fund to purchase a new one. So we didn't have to include it in the budget.
So it's an escape mechanism? In case we have a...
Yeah, yeah. And if we don't change it, then the purpose won't be met for the fund, so...
So we have to change... So I understand it correctly. We have to change...
Change the per... The fund was set up for a certain purpose, and that was to be recycling.
Okay, so you're gonna change this?
And we're gonna change the purpose of the fund to be for purchasing or repair of equipment. Okay, well, not repair, purchasing, I understand.
As long as it's clear to people under the warrant,
Yeah.
that it's no cost and that it's changing.
Right, there is no cost at all. There's nothing in his budget for it. It's just in case it breaks down, we will have the opportunity.
Okay. Francis?
Okay, I think Jeff is still here because he can verify what I'm about to say. But a few years back, the fire department redirected money purposes that they had, it was set up for one purpose, and they wanted to redefine it for another, which we did. It's a two-warrant article process. The first warrant article says it was something to the effect to see if the town will vote to remove whatever number it is from the existing whatever fund it is and put it in the general fund. If that is passed, then you go to the next warrant article to see if the town will vote to remove that amount of money from now what is called the expendable trust fund and put it into a newly named account.
Okay, thanks for bringing that up. Linda, can we just make a phone call to Jeff?
It's a unusual way of doing it, but we went through DRA to get all of that. And it makes a better paper trail, which is one thing that DRA likes to see.
I totally understand what you're saying. And that's a very good point. We did that last year for the landfill closure. It would just require me to write another warrant article just to change it, but there's no effect at all.
I think you may, to decrease confusion at the time of the town meeting, just put them right next to each other.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Chairman? Linda, can you tell me why the collection expense went up $3,000? What does that go toward? Is that to Richard?
Well, it's been a lot of... No. It goes to, like, bought tires and picked up a lot of tires. Who's the big one? We have... We just have lots of electronics this year. And it's an NARA, the Resources Association.
Don't people pay and dispose of their items and electronics?
And that's weird. The same situation comes in that Chief Truck was talking about. You look at that very last page, that gave you the income. You'll see that transfer station collection fees, we collected 14. But you can't take that right off the budget. It just all goes into the general fund. So they are collecting good money. It's just that our expense went up this year and we're still gonna collect this money. I know it's hard to understand, but this is the way we become the New Yorks, if I'm not mistaken, right?
I heard Randy said before he backed his...
Really? I'm sorry. He was asking why the collection expenses were so high. And, you know, I told him it's the same situation as with Chief Truck. They bring in an income, the transfer station. They bring in 14... They burn in 14,000 this year. But I can't... It can't be reflected in their budget. It has to go into an income account. That's just the way municipalities do it.
When DRA comes and sets the tax rate, they look at what you want to spend. They look at what you've got for income. They subtract it too and all their way down the house like that.
I think if people are paying to dispose of this equipment, that money should go to the collection fee, period. We're collecting it to get rid of it.
But you can't do that.
Doesn't work now. You can't do that.
It just doesn't work out. You have to... You just have to know that it's coming in on a revenue cut-off. You can't offset an expenditure. But yet, you still have to spend this money in order, you know, to...
Do you wanna... I'm sorry.
Okay, I can...
I can see.
So I can... I hope everybody can hear me. Oh, I have one ask. One ask, Linda. Non, can you hear me? Can you move back?
Well, Lisa, we said that you know... I mean, uh, we had her...
Listen, my question to you is, are you going to explain this warrant article or is Ray gonna explain it? Thank you. That's all I wanted to hear, young lady. What is that? I can't tell. I can't hear anything in it. Back to Mr. Chairman.
Linda? Linda, you wanna address the library? I'm sorry, I'm going.
I just wanted to say about the Rayburg station. They're having, um, twenty million. The Highway Department's like, "We need seven tires." Live Road, Road Street, Summer. So we can talk to the transfer station. And I know they have a payment right now. We need like, seven tires in Spring. We don't have Live Road or whatever.
Thank you.
Okay, so library budget. In 2020, they had a budget of $47,000. They brought it down to $44,000. This still is not finalized. The library trustees have not met. There may be an increase in the equipment and supplies area. They need to make perhaps a $3,000 purchase for a new desk and some other stuff.
How come they haven't met to do this?
Well, there's one excuse after another. They're meeting, I think, next week or the week after. I don't know. The library is a total separate entity. We have no control over it. They...
Yeah, but we have control over their budget.
I know.
Okay, and that...
There's nothing that I could do. Nancy couldn't give me the figures.
Can we hold back their budget if they don't vote it in?
We can.
I... They gotta do...
I was a trustee. Unfortunately, you have to fund them. That's...
No, I can understand having to fund them, but they have to take part in the process.
They should be.
If they don't take part in the process, they should be penalized.
They should be. This was something I used to do. I don't have problems going down.
You can't reinforce that kind of behavior.
No, I agree with you on that 100%. I start... They should be doing. But what... They haven't met.
Okay.
Is that what they told you? Nobody's met to work on this? Not recently. They're... No, they haven't. They had a preliminary meeting and they couldn't come to agreement on a few things, so they're meeting again. And, you know, the only excuse I got was that they felt...
That's not the town's problem if they can't agree. They have an obligation to run their department. And if they can't run the department, there'll be consequences. Francis?
They're conscious, like, really. They're conscious, like, to be a different old life. And then when they come to the town meeting, they'll tell everybody, "Hey, they didn't do their job. They didn't do it."
I know. That's what's about to happen. They will not have a budget.
No, if we give them their old budget, it's $3,000 more than what they're asking for now. But...
Okay, so that sounds like a great way to reinforce that kind of behavior.
Do you know, I've been after them...
Either they're gonna do the job or they are resigning and find somebody that can take the job to do the job.
Why are you doing that?
I don't know. It's frustrating. It makes Linda's job harder. I think there's a lot of people in this room that are working their tails off to get this done properly. It just pisses me off that people just pay lip service to this. Francis?
Is it on your agenda for discussion? The town court tax collectors area?
We're on the library, right?
I know that. Is it on your agenda to do that?
Yes.
There is a warrant article for it, and when we get to her budget, we can go over it.
Okay. We gotta deal with this in a positive fashion. How do we get back in touch with these people and tell them this is unacceptably illegal?
Well, what I do...
You want me to... Should the select board go to the next meeting?
It's certainly not me.
No, should the select board go to the next meeting?
Maybe a representative could, yeah. I don't know when it is. You'll have to find out from Nancy. But they did present this much of...
They gotta get their act together pretty damn quick.
Yeah.
Clarify that, because you don't wanna overstep your boundaries of selectmen. And I understand your frustration. I was a trustee.
Okay.
But there is definitive boundaries and rules. And there is a state... It's for all trustees book, but there's a whole section. And if you want to, you can read it. But review RSA 202. It's either colon 11 or Roman numeral 2. It's got five parts to it. That is the trustees, what they're supposed to do, how they're supposed to do it, and how the legal is bound.
Okay, so if they're in violation of that RSA, which I'm gonna review, and what do I do? Talk to the district attorney?
Um, there's a whole bunch of things in there. I would just review the law because what you don't wanna do is overstep your bounds.
No, I'm not gonna overstep my bounds, but I'm not gonna tolerate this one.
No, I understand that, Mr. Schiller, 100%.
Okay.
Can I say something? I think, if I'm not mistaken, that budgets have to be presented to you by January 31st. So we are holding a little bit earlier meeting.
That's okay. We're trying to do this so we get it right by January 31st. I don't want them coming in at the last minute like, "Oh, wow."
Right. So, I mean, so technically, they probably have until the 31st to get their final numbers to you. But I will... And I will verify that tomorrow to see if I'm correct in that. I think it was by January 31st.
Okay.
Mr. Schiller, you could send them a letter signed by the Board of Selectmen, and it's a paper firm.
I don't think you have to have them yourself, but what...
Come on, time out.
And you could send them a letter...
One person at a time.
And ask...
Okay.
And request that they get it into ASAP. You could also do it by email, but make sure that it's signed. Send it to your email if you want or through the mail. And just... It just shows if you're asking them and requesting.
Okay, Linda, can we drop the letter? Just to them, then I'll sign it. I'll come down and sign it. Oh, wait a minute, time out. One more. You guys comfortable listening? I'm just... I just don't wanna have something January 31st.
One of the other issues I wanted to bring up is I believe the library is under a trust.
Yes.
And so...
It's a special library.
Excuse me?
A special library, yes.
Yes. So, I mean, there could be some consequences for not doing what they should be doing under the trust. And, you know, the secretary... The Attorney General's office has a charitable trust division. And so if... But my mother always used to say, "You get more fly than honey when you do a benefit." So I would approach...
That's what I was saying to the request.
Yeah, I would, you know...
Right now...
Approaching just as you're suggesting, Mr. Chairman.
They're not responding... They're not responding to Linda's request. And that's inappropriate.
But if you sign it, it's no problem.
Thank you very much.
Chief Secretary, the fact that the final determination of the money that goes to the New York War Act was can be determined on the floor at the annual town meeting. And therefore, I would vote full around with it. If you take the certain amount of money that they think was for that particular warrant article, was that to the town? And then they come up with a particular figure there? You could change it on the floor, but it's not your responsibility to go chasing them to pick it when they've already been warned, and I know they have.
Let's send the letter. Thank you, Francis. Let's send the letter. Okay, I'm gonna give you a break, Linda. You wanna go to the planning board now?
Sure. The planning board's budget is pretty much the same as last year. The $1,500 is for the general fund. In 2020, it was used for legal fees between a neighbor boundary dispute and the right of way. So we decided... We went over it a little bit and it was covered by the general fund. It was a couple hundred bucks. We decided to keep it the same this year because that last 2020 was unusual, as we all know, but from a neutral year. The $5,000 is going to the master plan. The town has not had a master plan since 1986. So we... The planning board has interviewed a couple of companies to get this done. We have... We have settled on MAPS. It is the same company that did the hazard mitigation plan for the town of Landworth. So she will be doing the master plan. We- in 2020, we put the five thousand dollars down. It's- she's- it's- the total is fifteen thousand dollars for the mitigation plan. And we're doing it in three installments. So it was- we took the five thousand dollars in the budget and put a deposit down for the first payment. 2021, the five thousand dollars will go through the second installment. And 2022, we'll be asking for another five thousand dollars, and then that will be it. We'll have a plan in place. The plan is really extensive. The big part of it is the resident questionnaire of what everybody sees as their vision for the town of Landworth. So, that's it. And we need- we need this hazard mitigate- I mean, we need this master plan to coincide with the hazard mitigation plan for FEMA.
Can you hear me better? To confirm what was already said, I understand that you paid five thousand dollars, a one-third payment-
Yes.
For a contracted, so to speak, plan?
Yes.
The other part, which is one thousand five hundred dollars for administration costs, is for the mailings that you send out. It makes it hard for me to believe that those mailings would come out to exactly fifteen hundred dollars.
We- we- the- I'm new to the planning board, so- Every year, they have fifteen hundred dollars for miscellaneous expenses. This year, it was mostly for legal. The fifteen hundred will generally come out of the- for the mailing, but it's also part of the contract. So she will do the mailings.
I guess what I'm asking for, the five thousand dollars is an actual payment?
Yes.
I can't believe the fifteen hundred dollars is an actual payment. I can't believe-
It's not a payment. It's sort of the general fund for the planning board to function-
There is no general fund. They make payments, they are authorized to spend money, and when it's done, it's recorded, and all the expenditures have to-
Help me out, Linda.
He's talking about- he's talking about the actual for December, I mean, for 2020, which is fifteen hundred dollars. They paid- they had legal costs that exceeded their budget. And I had some money left in my legal budget. So I just took- I fully expended their budget and took the rest of the money and put it towards general legal.
That'd be fine. I don't think there's a proper way to do it, but-
Well, I didn't want to show the planning board being over budget with us still having some legal money in the budget.
Okay. Yeah, that was a pretty nasty board dispute. Is that it?
I'm done.
Okay, so the planning board. Who's putting together all the questions?
What would have been the actual expenditure?
The- I think there's, you know, there's sort of boilerplate questions that MAPS is for every town because- And we are going to sit down as a committee and really home down and do some really specific-
So you're gonna customize it?
We're gonna customize, especially when it comes to zoning, what we want for commercial, if we want a historic district.
Did you have any subdivisions for which notifications were set out?
This year? I think there was one subdivision that was approved.
Well, I remember this one.
Yeah.
Okay. Linda, I think I'll back to you. Pick whatever you want to talk about.
Okay. I guess we talk about the town clerk tax collector budget. She's pretty much under budget this year, except there's a small increase in salary that's being requested for the town clerk, tax collector. And you'll see that in article four. She has not received an increase in quite a number of years. And I think it's standard every three years, is it, Francis?
Only here for three years. And a board previous to last year, you like if you follow up on the fact that it hasn't been done. And for contract, how many more years does she have in this particular contract?
She is- her term expires this March.
She what?
This March.
So this is a standard of a three-year cycle? Is she pre-elected?
Yes.
Oh, good. That's perfect. So the fact is, for three years, the footmen did not have the authority, and they did, they did. Did not have the authority to raise her pay because, as we vote by the count. I do have a question on how I think the Warren Act should be worried. To see if the town will vote to raise it appropriately, it's worth changing that. Twenty-nine thousand five hundred dollars for the combined office of town clerk and tax collector, plus the usual benefit. In other words, I'm crossing out everything from the five thousand figure to the-
I'm crossing out everything from the five thousand figure all the way to-
The three thousand figure.
A three thousand figure, yes. I've already crossed it out, and I can't read my writing now. All the way over, I wouldn't put anything in there about three thousand dollars, because it looks like you're possibly raising that too. Now it'd be thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars. So, it would- less confusion to just say you're gonna raise twenty-nine thousand five hundred dollars for the combined office of town clerk, tax collector, plus the usual benefits. What I'm suggesting is the exact same wording from previous town reports going back ten or dozen years or more.
Okay, so you want me to reword that somehow?
I sent you the wording in an email. Did you get it?
Probably. I'll look.
Linda, why don't we just- we'll just revisit that and discuss this tomorrow?
All right. The numbers don't change.
Because she can't request a repayment unless you pass this Warren Act. Otherwise, she's stuck to twenty-six thousand five hundred.
Right, right. But I'm saying, if the numbers don't change in the Warren Act, it was still- she's still requesting twenty-nine five. Okay. And the other thing that went up is her deputy clerk, deputy tax clerk, tax collector. She increased that by twenty-five hundred dollars. I'm not really sure. I think she maybe required more hours for her and fewer hours from the assistant. Although that's up there too. I am- I'm not exactly sure.
What's Debbie's salary right now? Twenty-five?
Debbie's salary right now is twenty-six five.
Okay. You know what? Let's find out the exact numbers. This is why we're having this meeting, to find out how we need to look at it.
The exact salary right now is twenty-six five, I checked with the town board.
Right, and she's requesting twenty-nine five.
And that's justified based on the fact that she hasn't had six years of no way.
I guess what I was questioning is why the deputy's salary went up.
Yeah, that's what I don't understand.
I imagine that she's planning on more hours for her. She had fewer hours for Andrea that was here before, so. And then everything else is kind of the same across the board, all made up. Well, I will ask for a comment. All right, and I guess- The last thing, the municipal, I mean, admin?
Yeah, just do the admin.
Yeah.
And then I'll talk about the election.
Okay. The total general municipal operations budget that you can see in article three comes to three twenty-seven one oh seven. It includes many different categories. Whoops. And you can see on the budget here, under the very first column, those are the warrant article numbers that they refer to. So we're gonna go down and look at all the threes, and that will total that three twenty-one, um, three twenty-seven one oh seven. So the top section, which is basically all the salaries, this year sixty-one nine fifty, last year sixty-two nine fifty. And the big increase that I think you're probably gonna look at is my salary. It was forty thousand, plus we had sixty-five hundred dollars in there for a bookkeeper. Well, I'm doing both jobs, so I combined that salary to forty-six five. You see, the actual that- for that line item is fifty thousand, two thirty-three. It won't get that high this year, because last year was a learning experience. I put in many, many hours, because you know the situation I was thrown into. And I had to learn things on my own. So that is, you know, that salary has went up, you know, was up in 2020. But it will be regulated in 2021 for forty-six five. Admin clerk, I needed her at the beginning of 2020. We budgeted twenty-five hundred. I think we can get away with fifteen, how to get it, because she basically is just going to be doing one thing, and that is mailing out the yearly inventories. The town treasurer, that's five thousand. The trustee, town trustee gets a thousand. The health officer, I upped that by three hundred dollars, because we now have the assistant for the deputy. And she's getting happy with the health officer, so that is, and I, and the moderator has fewer town meetings, elections. So he's down to forty fifty. He gets a hundred and fifty per every time he moderates a meeting or goes to an election. So that's that section. The next section, financial administration. Audit fees, eleven- it's gonna be eleven thousand this year. Last year, they were twelve thousand, because we had a few little odds and ends from Quinn and Val. But we have a contract for eleven thousand. Recording fees, postage, I upped it, because I ran out of stamps at the end of the year. Office supplies, I upped it a hundred dollars. Usually, when we have an election, we pay for food. That comes out of my office supply budget, so I just- I left it the same, put another hundred. Office equipment, I don't see us having to spend much, but I wanted to keep something in there just in case, so I kept two thousand. Training, if any, there might be a little bit. Bank charges, a little. Mileage expense, very little. I don't know why we budgeted so high last year, but- Outside membership, this outside services and memberships. This is mainly ninety-five dollars a month that we spend to- for computer solutions. They're the ones that manage our server and our equipment and all our computing needs. That's mainly, there's some other small things in there. I can't think of the top of my head. The media, video recording, I had it three thousand dollars. We're currently paying someone thirty dollars an hour to do recording, and so I figured about a hundred dollars. And if you have anything to add or say about that, Andrew, you know, let us know.
Andrew, you want to chime in on that?
Yeah, I can chime in. So the- that line item was gonna be added to the budget, just as a recurring fee each year. Seems like it's a hit for the town, and one reason we're gonna put it in the budget as well. I started talking to Paly Vega TV, and they have the ability now to come out and do a simulcast, live streaming online into their TV service, and it'll be the same fee. So I'm still trying to get it, uh, to see if the prices change at all from last year. It looks like it hasn't, but that budget added should be fine.
Thank you.
And then the printing, copy ad expense, that's mainly for our annual report. We did have a couple of help wanted ads last year, or ads, I don't know, for the bridges and-
Art here.
The art is correct. Thank you. I just have three thousand in there in case we needed, you know, for some more ads. And then software, avatar software. I upped that a little bit from twenty-six hundred to three thousand, because I'd like to purchase a small, you know, a module for QuickBooks, so that two of us can be on at the same time. It just seems that it's always a conflict. We only have a license for one person. And the other one, I think it's three hundred dollars, but I just made it into three thousand.
Okay. Who competes with that one position?
Deb Vell.
Okay.
Yeah. And it- she doesn't want to work on it, but I-
Okay.
And it's like three hundred, oh, and the three hundred dollars, I'm sorry, is for three years.
Okay.
But you have to pay for it upfront. So we will be looking at bringing it into another three years.
Okay.
Then the next category-
Elections.
Three is the assessing.
Yeah.
Okay. The assessing, I'm keeping it eighteen five. It should be the same as last year. Then the next line item is a separate warrant article, number five. Thirty-nine nine hundred for the reevaluation that we need to do this year, to acquire by the state once every five years. And this is our year. And we have a contract for this, and it had been decided in a prior select board meeting a year and a half ago that this money would come out of the capital reserve account that we have set up tomorrow.
So that's gonna be a lot of capital.
So that's the capital reserve.
Question about that. So we have committed to that thirty-nine nine?
Yes.
That is, okay. Because we've got a new county administrator coming in, middle of, uh, middle of February. Andrew Dorsett, he is the county administrator of Littleton right now. But the county has hired him to be the new county administrator slash business administrator. And one of the things that he was talking about was perhaps the county could help the town with some of these revaluation things. So it's not gonna be set in stone yet, but I just want to, because I won't be here, you know, after March. And I just want to put that button in your body, that the county, but I will be county commissioner for the next year and ten months.
Well, our contract with Avatar is up in 2021, at the end of twenty-one. So maybe by then, we'll know a little more about what the county can do to help or, you know, whatever. And when we enter into a new contract, which I understand is every five years, because it has to include a revaluation, we'll have to get some guidance from them. So that's good. I mean, for 2021, we're not stuck without a time, but, you know, we're already committed to it, contracted it.
Just keep me, if you can, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I love.
Some extent, thank you.
Can I comment on my warrant?
Sure.
Yes.
Um, in general, explanations of why the warrant article exists should not be a part of the warrant article. They can come as a supplementary little bit explanation afterwards, but not in the process of making the warrant article. And furthermore, the warrant article should not dictate anything but ask the public for what they want. So, I'm suggesting that warrant article five, the second sentence, should be crossed out as an entitling. If you wanna put it in as after the warrant article as an explanation, that would be fine. But as part of the warrant article, it should be crossed out as entitling. The warrant article should read, through appropriate thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred dollars for full reevaluation of the property per agreement and Avatar Association. Said money is to come from the re, the capital reserve fund.
Okay.
And if you wanna put the explanation that the full is required every five years, that either comes from the floor at the annual town meeting or as a.
Yeah, I think we gotta give full disclosure on that.
Yeah.
And, you know, the town's better know why, why we're spending that much money.
No, I agree with, um.
Okay.
And I welcome Frances's talk, because this is the first year I've ever done them. Um, I had no clue when I came in where a warrant article was, but anyway.
Okay.
Um, I do appreciate your help.
Well, the explanations are certainly welcome, but they should be part of the warrant.
Yeah, okay.
What else you got, Andrew?
Uh, and then the, the next thing is we took out the digital mapping, um, because we discussed at the prior select board meeting that we didn't feel it was necessary to have maps updated every year. Uh, and it was coming in higher this year because we didn't have them for the last two years. So, maybe in the new agreement, we will.
Yeah, I, first of all, I think avatar of maps are, are deficient. And then they start to jack up the price, so, you know, the quality of the work is not there. They may be accurate in their assessments, but their digital mapping is, please, will have to be designed.
Who are you suggesting is better?
Say again.
Who are you suggesting is might be better?
I didn't make any suggestions. I just, the quality of it works, it's not bad.
They're probably right.
Okay, what's next?
Um, well, under that same category, only because I didn't know where to put it. Um, and I forgot to put the warrant article beside it. It's the gravity pit evaluation, right on the top of page two. Um, I, we budgeted seven thousand dollars, it's a warrant act, number twenty-one. Um, and I'm not sure, um, this might go down because I thought I heard Jordan saying we might be able to just get away with doing five thousand dollars.
Yeah, I think you gotta get, get in touch with Jordan in there.
Yeah.
He's, he's basically running that show.
Right, but the warrant, I don't think it will exceed seven by any means, but the warrant article, uh, is to do a study.
Send explorers to this place.
Right, have a record of study.
Hannah?
Yeah.
Did we, remember, did, have we found out if we own that property yet?
Uh, yeah, Frances did a, um, with the concrete and research fee to do on the reward. So now it's a matter of just surveying it and doing a, you know, assessment of the materials there.
Okay, um, legal, I just upped it from eight thousand to ten thousand. We seem to be getting a lot of our answers from the New Hampshire Municipal Association for free, so this is the general counsel in case we need it for any reason. Um, personnel administration, we have life insurance of thirty-eight-five. I don't know why that went down from last year. No, it didn't, I'm sorry. Two thousand and twenty, it was thirty-six, it went up a little, thirty-eight-five. Um, medical insurance reimbursement, and this is something I wanted to speak to the select board about, is I myself, in my position, have not been offered health insurance of any kind. And if I am in a full-time position, I would like to, uh, or whoever is my replace one, I would like me or them to get the seven thousand dollar stipend in lieu of health insurance. So that was that, I mean, it can, we can take it out, do what, that's what I, uh, think is only fair in this position. Um, and that's what was paid to the previous administrative assistant.
On the last single page, you just added you to a fund now for about a hundred and twenty-four dollars. How does that determine?
All right, I'm at there, um, and finish the budget then.
Hang on, let's just focus on the budget first.
All right, and I'll go over this revenue if later. Um, okay, so that's the personnel organization.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Yes, certainly.
Why did the other administrative assistant get the stipend? There you go.
Because I kinda came in on an emergency basis, and at first I just wanted an hourly rate. Um, and now that I've been here a year, I think the salary and benefits is, um.
I'm just curious.
Right.
Just curious if it's a good deal.
And, you know, also, if I decide to leave, you know, I wanna make sure the new person is trained and compensated appropriately.
Now, do you need a warrant article for this?
No, it's budget.
Okay.
A warrant article, if you want, a warrant article can, I don't know. What do you think?
Hang on, okay, so we'll, we'll, we'll adjust that.
Well, no, I mean, Frances.
Anybody have any questions on that?
Do you think a warrant article needs to be made to add me in, uh, as getting the seven thousand dollar annual health insurance stipend? In lieu of health insurance?
Is that my bidding?
Yes.
Answer yourself.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As long as it's in the budget and the budget approved, but if not, prove the budget.
All right, it is a number of employees who don't need health insurance, we gotta.
There are three employees that take advantage of this.
And so if well.
That would be myself, it's Deb.
And Alan.
And Alan. And, um, that regular health insurance for a single person is a thousand dollars a month.
Right.
So you're talking twelve thousand dollars for anybody.
You don't have to justify it. All I'm trying to do is, all I'm trying to do is make a point. We've already, as a select board, we've already voted on a decision for people that have, or to have health insurance, that we give them stipend. And so you fall into that category.
Do you find to be considered, yeah, part, hopefully.
All right.
No problem with that, no?
Okay, so.
All right.
It's done.
So, um, you know, that's that section. Then the town buildings, um, it's about the same. I dropped a couple hundred dollars based on actual. Um, town hall building is the same. Uh, historical society, even though it is a separate, um, warrant article, has requested twenty-five this year. Um, bandstand electric is the same.
Anybody here can I comment on the historical society, why they want that money?
I, I think that they're, they're pretty much down to nothing. And last year they got five thousand dollars for a new roof, but the roof was supposed to be done this fall, and the bid came in higher than five thousand, so. I, I think that they're asking for more funds to make up for the difference. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I'll tell you, just figure out why, you know.
Hopefully it will be in in this spring. Yeah, I forget who it was at the last meeting, in our budget meeting, that said that they requested twenty-four.
So they're just trying, so my understanding is the historical society just wants enough to put a roof on the place?
Yeah, there's some to put on the roof, but they need money to pay for the electric bill and a few expenses just to keep the, the building going.
So they've included all of that?
Yes.
Okay.
I brought this to your attention, I don't remember what I said now, but the five thousand dollars was not used. The five thousand dollars was not used, I understand, is that verifiable over there?
Right, the contractor has some.
And they're gonna do the roofing, I guess, this coming summer. Uh, they did not ask for twelve hundred dollars, they asked for five thousand for the roof. I don't know if that was an oversight on theirs. To my knowledge, when I left the historical society, they had enough money to do the regular maintenance and so on, so the five thousand was always necessary. I suggested to Linda to put in twelve hundred dollars, even though I'm not a member of the historical society anymore. And then I was talking with Craig, who is the treasurer, and he mentioned twenty-four hundred to me, and I think I passed that on to Linda some two or three months ago. Maybe that's where that number came from.
I think, I think what happened is they got the initial bid for the roof at five thousand dollars. But then there was a leak around the bathroom pipe, and as they started, as, as they got the bids, there was a wide variety of prices. And they decided that if, rather than just put the roof on, you needed roof vents, you needed a few other things. So that's what the increase for the roof is.
I left the historical society over a year ago, and so I'm no longer in the loop, so.
Okay, so it, there's a plan here.
There's a plan.
And this fits it.
Yes.
And this is what Craig requested.
Okay, okay, let's.
Um, the next category is insurance, uh, it's up a little bit. These are exact figures, the thirty thousand, six hundred, um, this year because we already got our renewal losses. Are they estimates if I don't like, it was the same last year.
What about these association memberships?
All these, they are membership fees, um.
Are they productive, are they productive for the town?
Well, I think we're required to have the Penny Baker Solid Waste, and that's in conjunction with the North Country Council. They're the ones that, they're environmental. Um, we have to be members because we have a transfer station, they provide the training. They also provide the resources for collection of certain things. And this is something that, I mean, I don't know a whole lot about, but I just know that, um, it's been a yearly thing for as far back as I can see.
Okay, as long as, is it required for the town to take part?
I know that.
Or, do we get some benefit from these funds?
I think, I think it's a requirement, certainly the Penny Baker Solid Waste does.
Okay, so just, maybe we can just.
And the North Country Council is, I have a, a letter from, um, I, they work in conjunction with the Penny Baker Solid Waste. They, they kinda overlap in certain areas, and I don't know these real specific.
Okay, so what can I explore? Okay, New Hampshire Association assessors and town clerks.
Yeah, these are just things we're members of because we, we have to be a member of the assessors. The town clerk, I think it's because of the newsletter. The Winnipesaukee Drug Consortium, we have to be a member of that because we have, um, CDL drivers who need to be tested.
Okay, that's a CDL.
Um, tests.
Is the North Country Council helping more with their work?
Environmental things, having to do with the transfer station, um, the planning board also, um, recycling resources.
Okay.
Um, and New Hampshire Municipal Association, yes, we benefit quite a bit from that.
Yeah.
And, yeah, that's a very useful one. The Health Officers Association. We didn't pay anything last year, and I don't know if it was just an oversight, but it's thirty-five dollars.
Okay, that's it, that's fine.
And then twenty-five dollars to become a member of the mutual aid that Jeff had.
Okay.
Um, five, and social security and Medicaid taxes, figured up a little bit because of salary increases and things. Um, and I think that's it.
And the ambulance thing, one of four green.
Oh, the ambulance.
What?
The ambulance is one of the ones that's highlighted in warrant article section because they are having their, uh, meeting tonight. Um, and he'll be able to call me tomorrow and let me know exactly. I just estimated an increase of, um, what do I increase?
Four thousand.
Four thousand dollars, um, that could go down. Hopefully it doesn't go up, but.
They, it looks like they're going up aggressively.
Right, but usually what happens is they do go up significantly. They usually come to a select board meeting and talk to you about, mm, you know.
Just wanna speak out of, none of this.
Members of people that they service and all that, just to explain why they're budget increased. But I think we should be pretty safe. And that's it.
That's it.
So, I just wanna go over the last page with you. Our total, what, page six. Our total budget, like I said, is the million three ninety-seven oh four. Okay? And, but what is coming from other funds are, follow down the bottom, thirty-nine, nine hundred for the reevaluation, and a hundred and twenty-eight, nine forty-two for the backhoe. So these two amounts are coming out of capital reserve. And Jeff has used a thousand dollars, a lot of his funded balance reserve. So really, the money that's gonna be generated from taxation is a million two twenty. Just so that you see that, and.
It's not gonna be all tax, is it now?
No, it's taxation and all the other revenue, I'm sorry, yes. Um, and now I'll, I'll just go over the, the very last, the single sheet that says estimated income.
Yeah.
See that? Okay, and, okay, what is it, this is very, very estimated. Uh, property taxes, estimated that we will charge, we'll send bills out throughout the year, two million seven hundred and forty thousand. School budget, I use the same budget as last year, but who knows what that's gonna come in at? Uh, and the grafted tax, one eighty-six. This, this is, the one eighty-six is pretty much what it comes in, has been coming in for the last couple of years, so that should be fairly close. Well, if you take the property taxes less the school and the grafted tax, we have nine hundred and nine thousand dollars left over of tax money that we can use to help fund our appropriations. Then we have all other income that is coming in, and it's all broken down. Land use, timber tax, all these various things that we collect. Um, less, you know, plus the two months we're gonna take out of the capital reserve, that gives us another six hundred and six thousand to work with. So we have nine oh nine, plus six oh six, gives us total income of a million five fifteen. And if you look on that, the last budget, when I just, on the last sheet of the budget, when I said our total appropriations are one million three ninety-seven oh four, I rounded up to one million three ninety-one. So if we have available resources through taxation and other income of one five, one five, minus our total appropriation. minus our total appropriations, thirteen ninety-one, it would give us a little bit of a surplus fund of one twenty-four, which gets, like, put into our fund balance account. But these are very, I don't wanna say nebulous numbers, um, because who knows?
They're estimated, they're estimated.
They're very estimated. The school budget went up seventy-six thousand last year. I have it flat for this year, which I have no clue. So that school budget could eat it right up.
You're making decisions by what the data you have and making the best decision. Wendy, I think you're doing a great job, by the way.
Oh, okay.
Yes, I agree.
Um, there's, there's a lot of work that's going into this and I'd like to thank everybody here who stayed apart. Paul, Chip Trot, Jeff Ames, um, and I, I just think that the, the town's really working together. I just wish the library group would, uh, stop playing in the same ballpark. Um, I don't, and we're gonna just explore how to address that with them.
I'm not, I don't want to discuss that.
Um, okay, any other questions?
At this time, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Rick?
Oh, I want to-
No, also, thank you very much.
I have one question.
Yeah?
In generalized terms, um-
Say, you know what, I'm gonna ask, I'm not picking it up.
Oh, I hate you. General, yeah, I'm going. In generalized terms, can you tell me why there's a difference of a hundred and twenty thousand, three hundred between this more finalized one and the sheet you gave us previously for the initial one? I've been going through trying to figure it out.
I think it's a, I think she, Linda's done an estimate on this last page.
Oh, I think-
No, I'm talking about the-
The one from February, uh, December first?
Right, it's for the administrative budget. There's a difference of a hundred and twenty thousand, three hundred dollars.
In the administrative budget?
Yes, you have-
Uh, it would be, it-
I, I, go ahead.
It would be the, um, I don't think I had the revaluation in it.
Okay, that, I thought like you were-
I don't think that we had the, um, truck.
Okay.
Well, that's not, okay.
That's in the, cause I, I think that tech counts for about half of it and would it be in-
I think that if you went through my report from before and compared to this, um, and then, you know, you can call me, I guess, and-
Okay, cause that's not, I mean, I-
Okay, I think that'd be a good idea, just the two of you guys get together offline and just-
Okay, that's fine.
Just so everybody has a good, uh, comfort level with it.
There were just so many changes and, you know, that first meeting was a real preliminary.
I, yeah, I understand that, I was going through where I thought and some of them were still the same, so.
Yeah, if you had that printout though.
I have three different.
Yeah, you two get together and we'll get a meeting of minds.
Okay.
Francis?
On page three of six, three lines down.
There is a figure about two-thirds of the way across of twenty-five thousand, seven sixty-three and change.
Yep.
That's insurance, right?
That's social security and Medicaid, the employer's portion, seven point six five.
Oh, okay, no, I'm wrong on that, okay, where's the insurance?
Insurance, you mean health insurance?
Yeah.
That is page two or three? Is page two on the top third of the page called Personnel Administration.
Page two, I'm there.
One third of the way down, Personnel Administration. You got medical life insurance of thirty-eight-five and medical insurance reimbursement of twenty-one thousand.
This is probably, uh, four questions now. Um, you're adding another insurance policy to that list, right? From the previous year?
Yes. And that's what we were talking about where we had, last year, the budget was for Tanya Vela and-
Alan Thorogood.
No, Deb Ziemba. Then we, Tanya left and Deb was getting it and Alan Thorogood came in halfway through the year. So now this new year is going to be Deb Ziemba, Alan, Thorogood, and the administrative assistant.
So is that two new people?
Saying that?
Is that two new people?
Well, it's actually, yeah, um, one and a half, I guess, yeah. Because in twenty-twenty, we budgeted for two people. It, um, it was Tanya and Deb.
Have you looked at those numbers, Catherine?
Did I look at them, Cap? What do you mean?
Well, you added two people, boy, and we're up thirteen thousand dollars.
Two people, we budgeted fourteen thousand. What happened was one person got it for the whole year and Alan Thorogood came in halfway, well, he, he wasn't effective, I think, until September. He came in later in the year and only got a partial.
So we're not naming names then, and then the road help will be seven thousand. And who's the other one that's getting seven thousand, what, that, doesn't matter?
The, the town clerk.
Seven thousand there, right?
Huh?
You're adding a figure of one-
Yes.
Seven thousand dollars, okay.
Right.
One for the highway department, one for the town clerk, and one for administration.
Right.
That's three.
We're adding one, we've already-
We only had two in twenty-twenty.
We had two before. Okay, are there any other-
Do you see that?
Any other que- questions? Okay, I move to adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everybody.
Question five. I asked you at the beginning of this meeting, is this what they're hearing, do you set it up?
We're discussing the budget.
He did make a motion to go into a budget hearing.
He did.
And it was seconded.
I, I was trying to hope you, Catherine, heard, Wendy did-
We voted on it.
My, these figures can not be changed after this meeting if you agree on these numbers tonight.
I think you're doing the hearing too early, quite frankly. I grant you, I think you've done a good job in getting the figures ready, but you don't have the final figures and consequently, you better read the laws on this here because it doesn't allow for change of the figures after the hearing.
I, I think you can just hold another budget hearing.
Yes.
You can change, we can, we can do another budget hearing.
Are you gonna hold another budget hearing? Just to let you know, February fifth is the last day you can do a notification of any hearing. February twelfth is the last day you can have any hearings.
Those dates are all out there on the Wentworth vote, they've been publicized.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. You have a vote?
Are you gonna have a hearing?
I'm not gonna make a decision right now.
I vote yes to adjourn.
I vote yes.
Yes.
That's okay.
Now, when you just adjourned, you just adjourned the hearing, correct?
The, the one I'm doing, it's like we're being asked to hear.
Yeah, it's time to build, it's time to-
The one I'm doing, it's like we're being asked to-
The hearing is a time of these four meetings.
I'm sorry, I'm just like, we're being, like, we're saying.
You can, you can, you can, of course, you can, from later, if you were to hear it, you know, how they're hearing back into the board meeting, then you want to, you can adjourn the next. Every single meeting of teams, correct party, that has a generally meeting.
I think that was the heater.